Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you please rise as we welcome Pastor Tim Multer of Calvary Chapel Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for each person represented here by the people and for the people. We thank you for putting on their heart to step up and serve their neighborhoods. We ask God that you would continue to give them a passion and a desire to help those in the community. God, we ask for peace and safety in this town. We pray you continue to bless the city staff, the police department, and the fire department for all that they're doing, oftentimes behind the scenes and with little bit of thanks. We ask you keep them safe and protect them, Lord. We ask that you would continue to prosper this town for businesses and families, for churches, and for schools. God, we ask that you give each of these city council members wisdom, Lord, as they deal with complex matters, help them to have your discernment in these areas. And God, we ask that you'd help them be good stewards of resources with taxpayer dollars, that they would make responsible decisions in spending and saving. And God, we ask that you'd help them in planning for the future of this great city and for the blessing of all the people in it. And Lord, we thank you for the peace and the hope and the love that you give. We thank you for Jesus who died on the cross for our sins, was buried, and rose from the grave. Bless this meeting, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 on February 6, 2023, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item this evening is the approval of the agenda. I do know of one item under Old Unfinished Business, the resolution relating to the letter of support from the Fergus Falls School District. I have spoken to Superintendent Jeff Drake, and he's asked that we delay taking up that matter until he's had an opportunity to talk with State Historic Preservation Office, with SHIPOL. So if that's agreeable to the council, we would wait until the school brings that back after they've had a chance to talk to SHIPOL.
I made that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Scott. Bill, are there any other additions?
No, you just have a corrected agenda correcting the resolution of accounts number, but those are on your desk, so.
Thank you, Bill. So we do have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening under petitions and communications. This time of year, we have the honor of declaring February 9, 2023, as Giving Hearts Day. We have some visitors with us. I didn't wear my special heart suit tonight, but I'd like to call on Steve Tunnison to give a little intro before we watch a video. So thank you, Steve, for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Ben. It's okay that you didn't wear your local attire tonight, but we appreciate you in the past doing that. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Tunnison, and on behalf of the eight nonprofit organizations that are part of the Giving Hearts Day Fergus Falls Collaborative, I'd like to thank Mayor Ben and also the council for your consideration for the proclamation that you're going to deal with tonight, declaring February 9, 2023, as the Giving Hearts Day for the city of Fergus Falls. For those who are not aware of Giving Hearts Day, and I think most people are these days, but if you're not, it's a 24-hour fundraising event for charities and nonprofits in North Dakota and in northwestern Minnesota. Giving Hearts Day was founded in 2008 in Fargo by the Dakota Medical Foundation, and since Giving Hearts Day, first event in 2008, generous donors have given over $138 million to participating charities and nonprofit organizations. And the nice thing about all those funds that have been donated remains in those organizations and their communities, used locally. The money raised normally goes for the organization to help them with their operating costs, and in some situations, it's also for helping with special projects that they're trying to accomplish. Between now and midnight of February 9, gifts to participating charities and nonprofits of $10 and more will be matched with matching funds, which each of the organizations have already raised in advance for that purpose. So as I mentioned, there are eight nonprofits in the Fergus Falls area that are participating. They are A Wife Like Me, Health Resources Center, Inspiration Point Bible Camp and Retreat Center, LB Homes, Lake Region Healthcare Foundation, Lutheran Brothers Seminary, Freedom Resource Center, and Hillcrest Lutheran Academy. So please find in front of you a flyer that explains about Giving Hearts Day, and there's a link on there, so if you want to look that up sometime to see what each of those organizations do in our communities, you can do that by checking that link out and find out more about the organizations. We work together as a collaborative because it helps raise us community awareness for each participating charity and nonprofit, as we work to make lasting impact in the city of Fergus Falls and the surrounding area. We'll show a short video, like you said. Any questions for that? If not, I want to thank Mayor Ben and the council again for doing this. You've done this for years now. We appreciate the fact that you're helping support the nonprofits in this area, and it's nice that we can, as nonprofits, can serve the Fergus Falls area and serve in a way because it's a great place to live and a great place to work, and it helps us to serve that community well. So thank you very much, and we'll show the video.
Thanks, Steve.
A Wife Like Me provides biblical hope, restoration, tools, and support for wives, strengthening their marriages and families. Your support on Giving Hearts Day goes to our Help Now project, so couples in crisis don't have to wait months or even a year to see a counselor. They'll receive immediate biblical help. Thank you for making a difference in the families in your community.
Freedom Resource Center provides services that increase independence for people with disabilities. We work with all people of all ages and all disabilities, free of charge. Please remember that people with disabilities are equal and valued participants in society. And please remember to support us on Giving Hearts Day.
Hello, I'm Amanda from Hillcrest Lutheran Academy, and our mission at Hillcrest Lutheran Academy is to equip young people in a Christ-centered, Bible-based environment for a life of eternal significance. This Giving Hearts Day, we would appreciate your support and your gift to our mission. Thank you.
At Health Resources Center, we come alongside individuals and families and offer one-on-one mentorship and resources in the areas of parenting and pregnancy, life coaching, and sexual health. Your Giving Hearts Day gift helps us strengthen the family structure with supporting women and men through education, healthy relationship resources, and life-affirming services. Join me in building future families this Giving Hearts Day.
In 2021, we were blessed to receive $80,000 for camp scholarships, so that no one could say that they couldn't afford to go to camp, and another $55,000 to cover a playground surface and some other site enhancements. This year, our goal is to raise again about $85,000 for camp scholarships and more site enhancements, such as pathway lighting and some more walkways around the camp.
Last year on Giving Hearts Day, through your generous support, LB Homes raised $10,000 to update some of the audio and visual equipment in Light &amp; Life Auditorium. This year, we're trying to raise $15,000 to $20,000 more in order to install a new projection screen and projection unit, so that our residents can use it for special events, activities, and worship services. Please consider supporting LB Homes this Giving Hearts Day.
Lutheran Brothers Seminary was established in 1903. It is a seminary for the Church of the Lutheran Brotherhood, where pastors and missionaries and laypeople are trained to spread the gospel of Jesus to people in North America and around the world. Giving Hearts Day donations help under at the cost of the seminary, so we can help people tuition more affordable to those that attend. Thank you for your support.
We at Lake Region Healthcare are committed to supporting the health and well-being of our patients and local community members. This year for Giving Hearts Day, we're raising funds to enhance our pediatric therapies department to maximize children's continual growth. Please join me on February 9 to support our exceptional frontline workers to help our littlest of patients.
All right, thank you for that, and I would read this resolution. Whereas Giving Hearts Day was started in 2008 by the Dakota Medical Foundation and Impact Foundation, as the first 24-hour regional giving event of its kind, with Alex Stern Family Foundation joining them as a co-host in 2014, and whereas Giving Hearts Day is a gateway for citizens to connect to charitable organizations doing important work improving health and quality of life across our state, and whereas Dakota Medical Foundation, Impact Foundation, and Alex Stern Family Foundation jointly support the Impact Institute to dramatically improve fundraising efforts of nonprofits, organizations, equipping them with data-driven resources, training, and coaching, and whereas since its inception, Giving Hearts Day has raised over $138 million to support regional charities, and whereas Giving Hearts Day in 2023 includes nearly 550 nonprofit organizations and charitable funds, spans the entire state of North Dakota and northwest Minnesota, includes eight nonprofit organizations in our own city of Fergus Falls, which are Inspiration Point, Freedom Resource Center, Health Resources Center, LB Homes, A Wife Like Me, Lutheran Brothers Seminary, Lake Region Healthcare Foundation, and Hillcrest Lutheran Academy, as well as additional organizations with local representatives, and whereas Giving Hearts Day in 2023 has a goal to inspire more than 50,000 giving hearts to support charity on Giving Hearts Day, many of whom get to experience the joy of giving for the first time, making us the most generous region on the planet. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim February 9, 2023, Giving Hearts Day in the city of Fergus Falls. And I'd just like to say thank you to each of the organizations that are participating, and thank you to the community for being so generous. Thank you.
You're on, I've got a question.
Yeah.
How do, like, obviously, there's only eight organizations kind of listed. How do others join this group to get the same promotion of their charities?
I believe there may be a few others in Fergus that are part of the Giving Hearts organization. To be a part of it, there's a fee you pay to the Dakota Foundation for their coaching, for their database, and things like that. The collaborative is open to people that are here, and these are the eight that have chosen to be a part of it, and so there might be one or two others that are also in Giving Hearts Day in the community that may not have chosen to be a part of the collaborative.
Right.
Please, people just come forward and say they want to be a part of it. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Okay. Thank you, guys, again, for your support.
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
All right, item number two under petitions and communications is the 2022 Investment Portfolio Review, and we'll call on our city finance director and acting city administrator, Bill Somer. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, tonight, we'll give you a little update on our investment portfolio for 2022. We did this at the end of the last quarter as well, so you kind of know where we're going with this. 2022 wasn't a great year for fixed income portfolios, and we'll have that shared here tonight. I'll give you a little background first on our structure. City of Fergus Falls, our portfolio, we have a long-term portfolio and then more of our liquid portfolio. The long-term is managed by Galliard Capital Management, and our more liquid funds are run through US Bank, which is linked with the 4M Fund, and the 4M Fund is run through the League of Minnesota Cities, and it is specifically geared for cities structured around Minnesota statutes for Minnesota city investments. So that's where our funds basically are held, and then the city also has an investment committee that oversees that process, and our city administrator, a member of the council, it's Councilmember Kramer this year, is on that committee, and then myself, our assistant finance director, Sandy Cunningham, and then we have an external investment consultant, and that's who you'll be hearing from tonight, Mike Heschen with Advanced Capital Group. His role is really to be that independent advisor to look at that purely, you know, from an independent standpoint. So he'll give us a little history on that. Before we get to Mike's presentation, I have on your desk the list of cash investments, and they're listed by fund. Obviously, I'm not going to go through each one line by line, but wanted to get you the information of why do we hold the funds we have, and what are they for, what are they dedicated for. Cities with governmental accounting were separated into several different funds, and you'll see that throughout here, and they're run almost like separate businesses, each one of those funds. The first one on the list is the general fund. That's our general operating fund of the city. That's where most of the business takes place. When you think of, you know, your police department, fire department, streets, administration, park and rec, community development, all that is in that general fund. So as of the end of the year, we have $8.6 million in that budget, but the annual budget for that fund is $14.1 million. Cities overall in all these funds, we get the majority of our revenue twice a year. So you need these fund balances at the end of the year because it's not until June and July that your tax settlements and local government aid payments come in. So that's why I kind of pointed that out in the note. The next section there, special revenue funds, they have dedicated revenue sources that are ongoing for those type of funds. The larger ones in here being the Port Authority at $910,000, but within the Port Authority, $543,000 of that cash balance is for the Community Behavioral Health Hospital. So those are funds we receive from the state of Minnesota to operate that facility. The balance of that then is for the Port Authority, and we still have ARPA funds there of $764,000. A lot of that will be going across the river here on that Phase Two, part of the downtown project. Public Library at $555,000, the Bigwood Center at $112,000, ICE Arena Fund, this is the capital portion for that fund at $428,000, and then you'll see all the tax abatement and TIF districts. So those funds can only be spent in those particular districts according to the plans that were set forth. So they're legally restricted for those uses. Then the bottom of that special revenue section are our revolving loan funds, where the city can make loans to various businesses. You certainly see that come before you from time to time. The money revolves back into these funds. It can be loaned out again, is the goal for that. So again, those are restricted for those loan funds. The 300 Series is debt service, so that's funds we have on hand to make our bond payments. Again, they're restricted according to debt covenants to make those bond payments. The largest one in there is the sales tax, funds of $980,000, just about $985,000. That'll be used to pay off the library bonds in December of 2023. So the end of this year, the library will be completely paid off. The next section, capital projects, just what it is, it's used to pay for capital-specific projects. And the 403 Fund, you see a negative balance there of $3.6 million. In essence, we're borrowing from other funds within that. That's made up of large receivables, money coming from the state of Minnesota for the Phase One of the downtown is in there, as well as other projects. So, you know, you expend the dollars, you wait for the state to reimburse you on those, and that's why that's negative at this time, and it has been for a number of years like that. It fluctuates based on flowing state funds through there. Then the enterprise funds, the 600 Series, those are run more like private businesses. Tax dollars don't go into those businesses. We actually transfer some out to the general fund, but that's your, you know, liquor stores, refuse, sewer, water, and stormwater, based on user charges, basically, for those. Turning the page, we have an internal service fund, that's our equipment fleet, where we purchase our equipment from that, and then we rent it out to the various departments to cover the maintenance, repair operations, and future replacement. And trust and agency funds, basically, all those funds have different restrictions on them from outside sources. You'll see where it's donor restricted. A large one in there is the landfill escrow agency fund, and those are funds that we built up over the years, operating the refuse burner, if you recall back to those years, and then it's because the ash was disposed of at the landfill. The state of Minnesota has to authorize when we can spend these, so therefore, caring for the old landfill and any other post-closure care costs and contingency out there. So each year, we may spend, you know, I think tonight in the resolution, we probably have a $69,000 transfer between these two. We get state authorization before we can actually make that transfer. So again, outside restricted. The last funds here on the page are fiscal host services for outside organizations that the city basically does accounting services for them. So I will stop there. Turn it over to Mike Heschen if you want to go through the performance review for 2022.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Can everyone see my screen?
Make sure, Mike?
Yes.
Make sure you try and speak up good in your microphone. You're a little hard to hear.
Okay. Okay, I'll tap down. I'll turn it up. How is that? Is that better?
Think it's a better, guys? Okay, it's better. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I wonder, if you, can you see the screen, the pages?
Yep, we can see the screen.
Okay, good. Sorry to put it out, this is something that we looked at in the past over the year, and this is the long-term fund, the total of all of those funds that Bill mentioned. And over time, this has gone from $10 million to now about $28 million. And over time, in the middle of this page, you'll see the earnings, nice earnings going back 25 years, a couple of small declines, but what I want to mostly focus on today is the large decline that we see year-to-date before the year 2022.
Mike, can I help you for a minute? Are you just not hearing that very well? No, Mike, you're not coming through good at all, very muffled.
Okay. I don't know what to do. How about this? Is that better?
Let me run through it. I'll run through it in person here, and you're my backup. How does that sound?
Okay. Okay, good.
So we're looking at the report from Advanced Capital. I apologize for that sound. It, man, sometimes it sounds fine, and tonight it's not good. Okay, so if you look at the first page on here, we're going to look at the past history. As you know, 2022, we told you at the end of the, at the end of the third quarter, you know, it wasn't a good year for returns. Interest rates went up so fast, I think like four, we went up 4.25% in the year in interest rate. You know, the Fed was raising rates very quickly. With the fixed income portfolio, the portfolio then moves in the inverse to that for value. Now, cities are required by law to mark our investments to market every month, so we go and adjust our values for that. Their unrealized losses, I want to point that out, that they're unrealized because we haven't sold those investments. So if we hold all our investments to maturity, we'll collect all that interest on that coupon for that, but the value is going to fluctuate a bit. You can see from the inception of the portfolio back in 1996 to 2022 how it's grown over the years. That's what that first chart on the top of Page Two shows. So you can see overall, we've had great growth. So yes, 2022, we were down in value probably, you know, about $3.5 million total for the year. It did come back up some towards the end of the year. We should be able to make that back up in the next couple of years, is what our advisors are thinking, that already in January of 2023, the value is back up around pushing $700,000. So that's, that's good news. That's what we like to see, that swinging back around. The earnings, you can see that in the middle of Page Two that shows, you know, you can see in 1999, we had negative earnings, 2013, negative earnings, 2021, and then, of course, the worst here, and I think, Mike, was it a fair statement that probably the worst for the last 40 years?
Yes, you did hear that.
Yep. So when we look back over time, I mean, obviously, you all know this in your personal lives too, that it, you know, this was not a good year. We did make a conscious effort to keep a larger balance in the 4M funds that are a money market fund, they're more liquid, so we kept over $10, $11, $12 million during the year. We had contemplated, you know, putting more in the portfolio prior to that, but we held back, holding it basically in cash or in a money market, and actually earning a fairly good rate, and now that rate's up like 4.25% right now. So that's, it's a pretty good rate that we're doing on that one. Net cash flow on the bottom of Page Two, you can see over the life, we haven't had to take a lot of money out of this portfolio, and we haven't put a lot in, a few times over the years. So a lot of this growth in the portfolio is appreciation of value. So in all those years where we had great gains, this year we had some giveback, and that's what we wanted to point out on that. Look to Page Three. It shows the various annualized returns. The one-year here, this is, you know, it shows our portfolio against our index, so, you know, down the 9%, two years, the 5.1%, three years, 1.7%, five years, it's positive, 10 years, it's positive there. Again, looking at that as far as swinging back already in January, yeah, it's going to take a bit for it to completely come back from 2022. Look at Page Four. We have the total gain over the years from 2012, that's our inception there at, no, it's inception was prior to that with Galliard, but looking at the last 10 years here, our gains, and you can see then that compared to the treasury yield then on the bottom as well. So certainly, great gains in, you know, 18, 19, 20, 21, but then coming down for 22, what we're seeing there. And then we have on the last page, Page Five, gains and losses here, you can see in the dollars, you know, $402,000 in 2018, higher in 19 and 20 at the $1.5 million, $1.6 million, some giveback there in '21, and then in 2022, again, worse as well, and there you can see $663 so far in 2023. Again, gains and losses factor in the changes in market value, as well as actual interest that were earned and paid in each year. So, Mike, what else were you going to add to that, that I'm forgetting?
Basically, I don't know if you can hear me okay, but, but two years ago, the investment portfolio was earning less than 1%.
Thank you, yep.
Now it's earning nearly 5%.
That's a good point. So, you know, interest rates were so low for so long, we weren't earning much over, you know, like you said, two years ago, but as principal pays down, Galliard is able to reinvest it now, or investments that are actually earning some interest, and now getting up that over that 4%, so not earning anything for a number of years. So you have the pain of this shock of the correction, but now as they're buying in new investments, we're going to, we're building that earning potential, and we are going to see that actually earning more going forward as well. So I think I'll stop there. If you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Bill.
I apologize again for, we got to get to the bottom of some of the, Zoom and sound don't work well in this room.
Questions from the council for Mike or Bill?
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Say, Ben? You could ask one question or ask for just one clarification.
Yeah, please, Scott.
Bill, you've said in the presentation that we don't often take money out of these funds, we don't often put money into those funds, and I was on this committee last year, so I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask you anyway. The decision to put money in or take money out is in whose hands, and at what point do we make those decisions?
So it starts with me, basically, where we look at, you know, what is our cash flow going to look like for the year, and we look at the, you know, it's, a lot of it tied to the projects. What projects are we going to have cash flow that we're going to be dealing with? Now, this year, we may draw some down more so out of the 4M fund because we're holding such high balances, like across the river when we do Phase Two, and we have cash portions of that. But we do go then to the investment committee, and if I'm going to look at putting money into that, I get that out to the investment committee, and then we make that decision, and same when we draw that down as well. Again, you know, I think back when we did the Laka Alice improvements, and we were doing the police department around the same time, I think we drew some healthy balances down at that time, but we've intentionally held higher locally, again, through US Bank, the 4M Fund, so.
And when you have those larger drawdowns, did that just come from the investment committee then, or did you bring a recommendation to the council to do it?
Just through the investment committee.
Okay.
Yep. Because, you know, Galliard and us, we're charged at managing that, so.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Bill? All right. Thank you. Uh, I- Under the consent agenda, there's, there's eight items this evening. If anyone would like to address any of those items individually, we will remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have the first reading of Ordinance 31, Eighth Series, dealing with stormwater management. Tonight, we just need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce that.
That ordinance. Thank you, Anthony. And we also have consideration, consideration of a resolution approving the city's strategic plan. Clara Beck, I'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. She did go over this at our Wednesday morning meeting, but, good evening, Clara.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, I don't have a lot to add from Wednesday. I did run through the plan as requested and make some notes about things that we have already started to accomplish, just based on work that the city has already been doing, and then the discussions that were formed throughout the planning process. So with our community and social development section, a lot of the outcomes of that revolved around communications. As you are aware, the city hired Gene Bowman to help head a communications department. So now we do have that role that we've been relying on, which has been incredibly helpful. Further down in community and social development, we talk about our relationship with the high school and their internship program. And I'm happy to report that this semester, we do have two high school interns who will be working within City Hall. One of them will be working in the engineering department, the other one will be working in community development, so they get to have some understanding of what happens at a local government level, which is really exciting, or at least they seem excited. They might be good liars. And then continuing on in community and social development, we have the, our childcare initiative, the rural childcare innovation program. We held a town hall event for that just at the end of January, and then actually just this morning, we met with that group again to continue their discussions about next steps for childcare in Fergus Falls. And that's a really active group that's coming up with some really great solutions that you'll hear more about in the future. Continuing on in, I believe, economic development, there was discussion in the plan about a downtown historic district. And what you'll see later on on your agenda is a request from the city's heritage preservation commission to go after a grant to help study what a downtown historic district could look like. So we are tackling that. And then finally, in land use, the dairy property is high on the list of redevelopment sites, and I am happy to report that the Port Authority has put out an RFP for development proposals, so that is out there publicly at this point. Those are some of the, just some of the items in the strategic plan that the city is already undertaking or looking at pursuing even before we've gotten to the point with you, council, now, where you're going to be hopefully approving the plan and allowing us to move forward with a lot of that work. So any questions or comments?
Thanks, Clara. Would somebody like to offer resolutions before discussion? Thank you. Tom? Second, Scott, thank you. Comments, questions for Clara? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Ray Myers.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Clara. And thank you to all of your staff for the work that's gone on over the past 12-plus months on this. Thanks, Clara. Item number three is consideration of a resolution approving moving police patrol officers from a C-41 category and sergeants to a C-43 on the city's current pay matrix and utilizing a memorandum of understanding until the next contract. We'll call on our HR director, Mike Hartwell. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I'm requesting that we take action to raise the wages for our patrol and our sergeants. A little bit of the background history behind that, as, as you all know, or maybe should know, is that there's a law enforcement shortage throughout the state of Minnesota. Many departments are finding it very difficult to recruit and retain, and we are as well. We've been actively searching for an open position to be filled since roughly the end of October, and we've had zero applicants. And we're talking about a wonderful community and a wonderful police department, and that's just how difficult it is right now to find qualified help. So one of our actions that Kyle and I and Andrew Remtzev would like to take is to make sure that we ensure that we don't lose any of our current officers. And number two, we'd also like to make sure that we're able to be competitive in recruit. By being competitive, we need to raise some of the wages on where we're currently at to our competition in the immediate area, which would be some of our counties that we compete with. And so this certainly does that. It enhances recruitment efforts, it helps retain our current officers we have, and it also places all city employees into one pay matrix, which is a good, consistent platform for us to operate from. The cost impact this year would be $39,969, which we can take care of by utilizing funds that are in this position that is yet to be hired for. And then we would adjust for 2024 in our budget planning, once we start that process here later on this summer.
Thank you. Mike?
I would offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent. Questions?
One thing that I guess I would, I would like to say, we met on this the other day, and we're competing with Ottertail County. And Ottertail County has got better pay than we have, and we need to keep the good officers we have. The older officers probably going to stick around, but these younger guys coming on, they're always looking for something a little better. We need to bring them up so they stay with us.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments, questions? For Mike, look for Chief Bergen. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Rupert.
Ray Myers.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number four would be consideration of a motion directing staff to work with Chris Hood on the next step for annexation by ordinance. I'll call on our city attorney, Ralph Nickelman.
Thank you, Your Honor. You have a memo that was included in the packet from Andrew that is excellent, it sets forth kind of the issue. City continues to work with the township on trying to work out an orderly annexation agreement. Unfortunately, we are still far apart on some key provisions, and we have a developer that is wanting to explore potential economic development on the site, and the next step is annexation. There's two ways to annex. One is to work out an agreement with the township. If you can't work out an agreement on the township, then you, then we can proceed with annexation by ordinance and proceed regardless of what the township's position is. Our only limitation is that we have to keep the annexation to 120 acres or less. And so we're at a point where we feel we need to continue to move forward in the annexation process. We will continue to work with the township, trying to work out an agreement. We have given a best and final offer, which has a deadline of February 13th, to the township for them to either accept or reject in the interim. And in the meantime, we feel it's important that we should continue moving forward with annexation, and that would be annexation by ordinance. And so the recommendation is to engage Chris Hood, who is an attorney from the city, specialist in annexation matters, and who worked with staff on moving forward with the annexation process. And again, we'll continue to work with the township, but if there is nothing worked out by February 13th, we want to be on the ground running.
Thank you.
So looking for a motion to authorize staff.
I made that, I made that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, second, questions for Ralph? Yes, please.
The amount looking to be annexed was 162 acres, and we're limited to 120. So then, how does that, what happens with the 42 acres that are then in limbo, so to speak?
We cannot annex in, we can only annex in up to 120 acres. What will probably happen with the additional land is we have to wait 12 months before we can use this annexation to annex additional property. So what will happen is, is that the developer will have to wait 12 months to bring in additional property beyond the 120 acres. We're not 100% sure whether they need the whole 160 acres, and they're trying to work out a configuration that would work with 120 acres or less. The statute requires us, if we wish to proceed with annexation by ordinance, that we're limited only to, up to 120 acres. So it doesn't mean that property won't come in, it just means it won't come in at this time.
If we come to an agreement with the township. Yeah. If we come to an agreement, it's all.
Yeah, if we come to an agreement, it's all.
Hopefully, by starting this process, we would encourage the township to realize it's in their best interest to, to an orderly annexation for the entire 160 acres.
I think I understand that. I just was wanting to be clear that the entity wanting to have the annexation, if they could still even move forward at 120.
If they can.
You know, the deal doesn't fall apart for them. So then let's keep going.
It's at their request, is, is, you know, because they're the petitioners, they're petitioning the city. Of course, they would like to do 160 acres, but if we can't work an agreement with the, with the township, they will work up with 120 acres.
Okay, hopefully, the township will work it out with us.
We're trying.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other questions for Ralph, for city staff? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? That motion carries. Item number five would be consideration of a resolution authorizing the Heritage Preservation Commission to apply for up to $10,000 from the historic preservation fund as a certified local government to fund a historic district eligibility study. And I know there are members from the HPC in the audience with us, but I will call on Clara Beck at this time to introduce this to us.
Thank you. So I am the staff liaison for the Heritage Preservation Commission, and one of the items that the HPC would like to pursue this year in conjunction with the Downtown Riverfront Council is a study of the, our downtown to see if it is eligible for a historic district through the National Park Service. So the first step of that would be to apply for a grant through SHPO, who can provide funds that would then fund a consultant to come in and help us perform that work. There is a 30% match required. At this time, there is no request of the city to make that match. We do believe that we can make up that match through in-kind donation, which is acceptable to SHPO. We're asking for up to $10,000 from SHPO at this point, because we're still in discussion with a couple of different consultants about what a contract could look like to do that work downtown. But ultimately, the outcome we would hope to see would be an affirmative that we do have what it takes to become a designated historic district downtown. If the study comes back and says that we are not eligible, then that would kind of be the end of the discussion. If it comes back that we are eligible, then the HPC would be back in front of you for further discussion. There would also be a lot of public outreach that would need to happen to help to decide if council does want to go down the route of a historic designation and what that would look like for Fergus Falls. So you're not making any decisions tonight necessarily about a future historic designation. What you are doing is just allowing a consultant to come in, work with the Heritage Preservation Commission, the Ottertail County Historical Society, and the Downtown Riverfront Council to determine eligibility.
Thank you, Clara. Would someone like to offer resolutions for discussion?
Would.
Thank you, Scott. Someone like to second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead.
I got two questions. I mean, what is the benefit from this? And I did have one person contact me about this a while ago. How would this affect businesses downtown if we got the designation on what they could or could not do to their current structures?
Good question. So what you're asking about is an actual downtown historic designation, which is not necessarily what we're discussing with this grant. We're just trying to determine eligibility. But should eligibility be determined, and we do go down the route of asking for a downtown historic district? If you recall, we had members from the state historic preservation office come up in, I think, November and do a presentation about the program. Businesses are not required to be part of it. If they are part of a downtown historic district, that may open them up to funds that could be available for historic structures. The city does not have funds specifically for that at this point, but there may be state or federal programs that they could be available, that could be available to them. Other benefits include marketability. If you can market a downtown historic district, other communities have proven that that can be a draw then to those communities. So some of it is a little bit intangible, some of it might be tangible in the form of dollars.
So basically, if we were to get the designation, it doesn't put any restrictions on an owner of what he could do to his property?
Nope. No. And we will continue to discuss that further and flesh out what a program would look like in Fergus Falls, but at this point, again, we're just trying to determine the eligibility.
Thanks, Clara. Other questions? Clara? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Joe.
Joe.
Wong.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Ray Myers.
Thompson.
Thompson.
That resolution is approved. Thank you. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,211,800, I'm sorry, $586.90. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director, Bill Solomon.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Joe.
Joe.
Wong.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. As we mentioned at the start of the meeting, under old business, item number one has been removed until further discussions between the school district and the state historic preservation office are able to take place. I don't believe that there is any other old, unfinished, or new business. With that, we will be adjourning to a closed meeting to discuss a real estate transaction offer pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 113D.05. There is a chance that we will be reconvening for consideration, action on that.
Where the property address?
Oh, the property address is located at 309 Stanton Avenue, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. So with that, we're adjourned to a closed session.